This is the June 30th, 2020 meeting of the Acution Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped via Zoom, and we do have a quorum today. Our first order of business is the secretary's report from both March 12th and April 3rd. Does anyone have any questions or comments on either one of those?
Oh.
Okay. And we just need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is the expense report.
Okay, so normally I don't email these out, as you know, I hand them when we're in person, but I sent you on Friday a snapshot of where we were at on Friday. Today is the last day of the fiscal year, as you know. So there will be adjustments made to this with the final payroll and with a few last-minute expenditures that have come through. So we will see that essentially that entire salary line will be depleted by the end of, or tomorrow, when I do payroll. And then the operating line, we were pretty much at a standstill for operating once we closed the building to the public. We had already spent out a few lines. And then, you know, we had no reason to be having equipment repairs because we weren't here. Or, you know, the education line didn't get spent out too much because there was no meetings to travel to or things to do like that. So you're not going to see too much of a difference within these lines between now and the next time we meet. But as of Friday, we were not going to spend out for the fiscal year. That's all, unless anyone has any questions?
Do you know what happens to the line items that you did not spend, those that you just mentioned?
So when that doesn't, when we don't spend out, this is the same thing that happens every year. The money gets turned into the general fund for the town, so the money just goes back to the town.
Nothing you can do about that?
No. And, you know, we were asked in March when we closed, you know, I don't think the town was ever in an official spending freeze, but we were asked to spend very wisely.
We did.
And we did spend very wisely. It was just, or not spend. I mean, we spend things we were contractually obligated to spend, or things like, you know, a telephone bill and the other source bill, those kinds of things. But we didn't, I didn't go on a spending spree with the remainder of that money to buy things we could use at a later date.
That was wise.
Yeah, well, just seems like the responsible thing to do.
Correct.
Anyone have any other questions or comments on the budget report?
Nope.
We need a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Before we get into the new business for today, I just want to mention that Henry Preston, who was a member of our committee for our Board of Trustees for the last 12 years, decided not to run for reelection, but we do want to publicly thank him for those 12 years of service and everything that he did, especially during the time of the library transition over here and everything that that entailed. So I do want to publicly thank him, and we will miss him on the board.
For sure. Thank you, Henry.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Henry.
I also want to mention that, as you know, we had the town election this past Saturday, and we did have, we do have a seat open as Henry not, you know, didn't want to run for reelection. So we did have some write-in candidates, and they're tallying those results at the town hall, and we should get those sometime this week, so we'll be able to see who that new board member will be. So right now, we're just a member short as far as this meeting, but hopefully next meeting will be back to six. With that, as you know, since we are at the first meeting after the town election, we need to conduct our annual selection of officers. So we have to do the chair and the secretary. So we need a motion or a nomination of chair.
I'll make a motion to nominate Jen Als to repeat as chairman of the Board of Trustees.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we have secretary as well. Right now Jerry's the secretary.
I'll make a motion to keep Jerry as secretary of the Board of Trustees.
Second it.
I'll second it.
Jerry, do you accept?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, well, now that that's out of the way, we have the reopening plan. Dina wanted to talk about that.
Okay. So as you all know from, you know, the emails I was sending out, you know, during quarantine, we started working on a reopening plan for the library back in April, at the end of April. The plan that we're talking about today that's dated June 2020 has been revised quite a few times throughout the past two months, you know, from when it was originally written. And the plan that we're talking about was approved by the Board of Selectmen. I appreciate that they unanimously supported our reopening plans, especially in terms of starting our takeout service. And so, you know, really the effective date in terms of the Board of Selectmen's approval is June 11th for this plan, but I will be asking you to approve the plan today as well as written. There will be modifications that continue to happen with the plan, but I will ask you to approve it once we've gone through a few pieces of it today as presented, just so that we can move forward with a few things that we're getting questions about from the public right now. So as you know, we're in stage one of the library's reopening plan, which is limited services. As it's written, is with extremely limited access to the building interior, and the only people allowed into the building right now are library staff, town employees, and anyone making a delivery, because we're receiving, you know, deliveries from our vendors through UPS and FedEx, W. We also are starting to receive the delivery from the statewide delivery system again. So those are the only people coming into our building right now. We started our takeout service on June 11th, and as of this morning, we've provided 686, excuse me, 686 items through the takeout service. We started very small with the takeout service in terms of, you know, only letting, at first, the patrons who have items on hold here for our closure on March 16th, we notified them first about the items. We then reached out to patrons through a newsletter and through social media, but we have not advertised through the press yet, we will be doing that soon. The response that we've received for takeout has been overwhelmingly positive. People are excited to know that they have the option to have library material again, and we're pretty much limited to what's in our building, but we do have over 25,000 items in here, and we've been getting new material, so there is quite a bit that's available. The delivery system, like I mentioned, is slowly resuming, but we expect it could take, you know, two to three weeks between when an item's placed on hold. If it is, if it's readily available, we're thinking two to three weeks to actually get into a patron's hands, because of the fact that once we receive the delivery, we are and we'll talk a bit about that in a minute. But so far, so good on the takeout, and that's part of stage one. Another part is virtual programs, which we've been doing a little bit of since closing, and we officially have announced our summer reading program as of today. So a lot of what we're doing for summer is primarily virtual. There's a lot of really things that the staff has worked on, which I'll talk more about later. So we are providing virtual programs. We're doing take-and-make craft bags, which we're distributing during our takeout service. And those have been really popular. We handed out 40 last week, and we've already handed out over a dozen since releasing this week's yesterday. So people seem to be very happy for the craft bags. And we're continuing to provide assistance through email and phone and maybe a little, a little secret in some ways, but we're continuing to offer access from our parking lot, and we know that people have been able to take advantage of the Wi-Fi from the parking lot throughout our closure, and they can continue to do so. The signal can be a little bit questionable depending on where you're parked, but it's pretty strong if you're on the north side of the building. So that's what we are doing in stage one. Stage two will depend on what happens when the next set of guidelines come out from the governor, and also will depend on what our local Board of Health, more so than the guidelines. I mean, the guidelines from the governor's office are a recommendation or a guide, you know. We don't have to do the things that are listed in the guidelines. So a lot of future steps will depend on what's recommended by our Board of Health, what other town departments are doing, and what you as the board and I as the library director feel comfortable having happen as we progress further. But we, you know, would like at some point to be able to allow access to the building by appointment for computer use, but we're just not there yet. But we know that is a need and is a critical need for some, and we recognize that. And once it's determined that it's okay to do that, we'll move forward and make that possible. And then, you know, a full-scale reopening, I think, is still quite a ways away. But that's just a quick synopsis of what we're doing with takeout and the different stages that we have. What I really want to focus on are the other considerations section, unless you have any questions so far about what's happening? No? Okay.
I don't have anything to go back.
Okay, okay, good.
Thank you.
So in the, thank you. I've mentioned the governor's guidance, that's the first part of the other considerations from his June 8th, Phase 2, Step 1 guidelines. Libraries are allowed to reopen, but only for curbside takeout services, which we've been doing since June 11th. The public is permitted to enter a library building, but only to pick up items in a vestibule or at a circulation desk. We have a great setup for our takeout service. In case people aren't aware, we have a lovely ramp along our community room that the ramp, you know, leads to our deck or leads to access to the building through the deckside door. The community room windows are positioned in such a way that they line up very nicely with the deck, which is great for us, because staff can be in the building and the public can be outside of the building accessing material that they need, you know, through the windows. So how it stands now, if a patron has returns, we are accepting returns, and if they have returns, they can leave their returns with no bags at the first window of the community room. So when you turn onto that deck ramp, the window, the first window has a tray sticking out of it, and you can leave your returns right on that tray, no bags please. You then go down to the fourth window, which has another tray, and that's where you pick up your supplies or your crafts if you're coming for a make-and-take craft. If you are taking advantage of the curbside or, excuse me, the takeout service, you do need to wear a mask and you do need to have your library card with you. You show us your library card through the window, and we match up the numbers on your card to the correct bag and then pass the bag to you through the window. It's a beautiful, so in other words, we don't need to allow access to the circulation desk area of the building. This is a beautiful, staff is very comfortable, they feel very safe with how we're handling the service. And so I think with what we're permitted to do by those guidelines right now, we're doing it in a way that doesn't require someone needing access to the building to come to the circulation desk. The windows of the community room are just perfect for what we need right here. And Jim Merritt, the building commissioner, built two beautiful trays for us to use at either window, and that's working out wonderfully for us as well. So that's where we stand on that governor's guidance. As far as entrance and exit into the building, the staff are all using the staff entrance and the deckside door if they need to go out to the front area. Deliveries, we're trying to manage it just the deckside door, which is working out really well. The exception is when we get the statewide delivery, because where we need him to put the totes is nowhere near the deckside door, so it's just easier for him to come in the main door, and we're making sure we wipe down the area after he's come through, so we're taking care of that. One of the big issues in the other considerations is materials handling quarantine. As you all know, this has been a source of concern from the get-go in terms of, you know, what do we do? When we were close to the public, staff were in the building sporadically, I would get phone calls while I was here, and, you know, people would say, "I just can't understand why I can go into a store and get something, but I can't come into the library and get something." And the thing that makes a library different from a retail outlet is that oftentimes when people do come into the library, they can be here for an hour, sometimes two hours, browsing the shelves, looking at a lot of, handling a lot of material, reading the back of a book or a DVD cover, flipping through a magazine. There's a lot of touchpoints when our average patron is in here browsing. Even when they're not in here browsing, there's a lot of concern as to the fact, I mean, when you go to a store, typically you buy something and you bring it home, and you don't bring it back to the store most often, you know? With a library item, you borrow it and then you bring it back. How do we know that it's appropriate to recirculate that item after you've brought something back? There's been quite a lot of information, we've all heard it, even from, you know, not even necessarily our library use, but our own personal shopping, of how long the virus can live on surfaces, and that was a source, a very serious source of concern, you know, this whole time. So there are a lot of studies were being done from a lot of different library-related entities, and the big study we were waiting on, as you know, was the Institute of Museum and Library Services study that began in April. We expected results at some point in May, and then they realized that was going to take a little bit longer than expected. And then it was going to take a little bit longer than they expected with, after the first, you know, time of them coming out and saying, "We don't have any answers yet", and then it was going to take a little bit longer to get some results. So we ended up going with the Northeast Document Conservation Center's results, study results, which indicated that the virus could be detected for seven days or after, not after seven days, but up to seven days on plastic surfaces. And as you know, a lot of our material is covered in Mylar, so we do have a lot of plastic surfaces that are touched in terms of our material. So we've made the decision between myself and Jeff to quarantine returns or anything arriving in delivery for seven days for now. Since that decision was made, the Institute of Museum and Library Services has released some preliminary results, and they are saying three days for plastic, or no more than 72 hours, I believe is what they wrote. But they are conducting another study, and the results for that will be out in July. So I'd like to wait and see what the results are with their July study, and if at that point their results are consistent and they're still finding 72 hours, then we will adjust or discuss adjusting the quarantine period for our items from seven days to 72 hours. But the seven days is working out okay for us. We did borrow totes or recycling totes from the DPW, and I appreciate that the DPW was willing to loan us these totes, and we're sort of loading up all over the returns and items delivered into the same tote, so that we only have one area, you know, one tote to have to mark and know when we have to open it. So we've got three of the recycling bins from the TPW. Kathy Silvers did tell me that they could provide more if needed, but it seems to be going okay with three of those, because we do have a lot of tote bins that we've used for other programming. So the system seems to be working, and again, the staff is very comfortable with how we're doing this, and that's like the biggest priority right now, is that the staff feels comfortable. And we also want the public to feel comfortable when they're borrowing an item that has just been returned to us. So it's, you know, it's got that one week of quarantine, and we should be good after that. So that's where we stand on materials handling and quarantine. In terms of programs, and this is a big one, programs are one of our core services. It really stinks that we're starting summer reading, and summer reading has to be when your summer is normally our biggest time. You know, we have, there are some days where, you know, 200 people in one day have attended programs here at the library, and we just can't do that this year. And at this point, I'm, when it, you know, when we start discussing when we'll do programs again, we're going to need to be very cautious as to how and when we start up programs again. And at this point, I imagine we'll be suspending all in-person programs until at least September of this year. I know that other libraries in the area are already announcing that they've, they are suspending programs at least through the end of this year, and will revisit in January. For now, I'm still comfortable with the September, but we'll revisit that at some point as to how long we're going to go until we are offering programs here again. The use of the community room and study rooms is a pretty big deal. Obviously, we wouldn't be doing that right now, since the building is still close to the public, but I'm not sure what the expectation would be as we move into different stages. And I think it will be vital, depending on where we're at, that the board adjusts those dates in a way in which the board and the staff are comfortable. I mean, we are using the community room right now as a storage for all of the returns and delivery items, and that's also obviously what the staff is handling takeout. So we, even if we wanted to lend out the community room to an outside group, we wouldn't be able to, as it stands right now. And the study rooms, you know, are so small, I mean, maybe you could have one person in them, but could you have two people in them? You know, I'm not sure. So that will be a conversation that will need to happen with the building commissioner, because he does set, along with the fire chief, what the occupancy limits are for the building, and we would have to get specific instructions from them as to what the occupancy limits could be for the study rooms. And if we're going to even lend them out, it might be best, depending on what stage we're in, to also just make it that the study rooms are unavailable, but we'll have to discuss that more down. I'm going to skip over the next one, which is suspending overdue fines, we'll come back to that. Donations, we've, that's been a hot topic with patrons, I think. A lot of people did clean, you know, did a lot of cleaning during quarantine and unearthed, you know, a lot of books. I don't want anymore. And also, a lot of people purchased books during quarantine, because that was a way for them to access if they're either, you know, not into reading online or, you know, didn't want to. So we've had a lot of questions regarding when can they bring donations? And effective immediately from this plan is that we're unable to accept donations of any material at this time. The Friends of the Library met last week, and they are not holding an annual sale this year. Normally, the majority of our donations go to the Friends. The vast majority of donations go to the Friends, and since they have no plans to have a sale this year and don't have any idea yet when they would have a sale next year, and due to the fact that we just don't have the physical space to quarantine donations or to store them indefinitely, we just can't accept donations at this time. So the staff do have some options of where to suggest, you know, donations can go, but unfortunately, our library isn't able to accept donations now. And then, you know, if this, something were to happen again in terms of, I mean, we're still, I feel like some people are talking about it as if this is over, and I think we all know that COVID-19 is not over clearly, but if we were to have to do some backpedaling in terms of stopping our takeout service, or if we make it to state, or when we make it to stage two, if we have to backpedal from allowing people into the building by appointment, you know, we have, this is some criteria that we could use. Obviously, our, the biggest criteria would be following what the Board of Health is recommending for the town and what other town departments are doing. But it is something to just have in mind, I guess, or something I want you to be aware of that I have in mind, is that at any time, we may have to pull back any services that we're offering, depending on where we're at. And then finally, back up to the suspension of overdue fines, which is a key reason why I would like you to approve the plan as presented. Currently, all material that was checked out, whether or not it was overdue prior to when we closed, which was March 16th, all checked-out material had a, the due date modified multiple times by the sales network throughout our government. The current due date for all checked-out material is July 31st. The sales network, and they've been fantastic, by the way, but they are not going to alter the date further. It's, July 31st is the last time they're altering a date. We could choose to modify the date in-house, but the network is not going to modify the date again after now. But I would like some serious consideration to be given to suspending overdue fines, and I would like it to be through the end of the year. I know it says possibly through the end of the year, but I would like it to be through the end of the year. The fines go into our revolving fund. I think it's critical that their revolving fund remain intact as much as it can, and that we do have money coming into the revolving fund, because we just don't know what budgets are going to be like going forward. We've only had a revolving fund for a short period of time, so it would be nice to keep that going. And one of the key ways it is sustained is through fines. However, I feel like it's just necessary for us to cut some slack right now as much as we can. I'm also thinking of people who, again, were maybe cleaning during quarantine and came upon some books that were due a long time ago, you know, and were, are considered lost in the system. And I want people to feel that they can bring those books back. I mean, as it stands, if you bring a lost item back, we only charge you $2, that's the max fee on a lost item, but I think it would be even nicer during this time, we won't even charge you the $2 if you bring us the lost item back, we're just going to be happy to have that back. And I would really like to put that out there for people to just feel that they can come back without repercussion. And I'm also thinking of people who maybe just don't feel comfortable still leaving their homes, which is totally understandable, and they can't get here by July 31st to return their items. And I want them to feel that they can come to us in October or November, you know, depending on what things are like then, and not owe us any money. I mean, certainly, I personally, you know, I want people to understand that the library at no time is looking to make a profit off of this current situation, even if that profit is 10 cents. You know, I mean, we don't, we don't want it right now. So if it's okay, you know, with the board, since you would make that decision ultimately, but I would like the board to accept the plan as presented, and with removing that word possibly, and just that we decide to suspend overdue fines through the end of the year. You know, that can always be revisited at the end of the year.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't, please say. Or if you want, you know, if you need more details from me on it, then, you know, please, please ask.
I have a question.
I have a question for not on the fines, but on the, what if this happens again? Topic. Are we going to, as a board and a library director, assume going forward how the library is going to go? So for instance, if we need to backpedal, we should be able to do that within our purview here. Or do we have to wait and see what the town does? Yeah, obviously, the library is different than the town. And as you said, with handling the material and a whole public presence and being in the library. So if we move forward to stage two and then have to go back to stage one, is that something that, you know, if you feel uncomfortable with, that you can bring to us and we should be able to vote on to do?
I believe so, because as long as the staff is reporting to work here in the building, then you, the Board of Trustees can set the day-to-day operations of the library. So if day-to-day operations are, that we're using, or allowing people in by appointment to use the computer, but then it's determined that that is not a good practice for us at this time, either because of the amount of people who want to use the computer or if we, you know, have some staff members who are unable to come into the building, you know, due to health reasons, let's say. We might not have the staffing levels to accommodate usage by the public. So as I understand it, the board, because it's a day-to-day operation, could backpedal to a, we're only doing takeout at this time. We're not, you know, I think, you know, we, we could make that decision without the town involvement. I think if it became a matter of closing the building completely and cutting services, in-person service, even if that's just the takeout service. And, you know, I don't even want to think about staff having to work remotely again, but if we had to do something like that, then I think at that time, it would involve the Board of Selectmen when it becomes a personnel issue. But if it's just a matter of cutting or cutting back on a service or adjusting a service, then that's a day-to-day operation and I can, I believe that we can just discuss that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I, I mean, that's how I understood it, but I wanted to make sure that it was clear so that we could just, if, you know, if you felt uncomfortable, we, we had the authority to move forward.
Yeah, and it should be that way. And anything at this point, the staff is all, you know, been back in the building to work. Was that the week that everybody returned full-time or for their full hours? They're, they're all part-timers. So when everyone returned for their full hours was the week of June 15th. And, and I will say that, you know, I so appreciate the Board of Selectmen so thoughtfully reviewing plans for remote work and for supporting the plans for staff to, to work remotely. And our town administrator Julie Hebert has been wonderful in that regard also. You know, I will talk a little bit more once we get past this about, you know, how wonderful and outstanding our staff was while working remotely. But it is important to note that, you know, we, we appreciate the support of the Board of Selectmen and Ms. Hebert for allowing us to work remotely as needed. That was, I think, a huge relief to the majority of our staff members.
Does anybody else have any questions on the reopening plan or any comments or anything? The only other comment I will add is I have used the takeout service. I've been there several, several, several times. And it is, it's absolutely amazing. It's so quick. It's so easy. It's, it's, I've gotten my takeout crafts already for last week and I'll be going to get my dinosaur tomorrow.
Wonderful.
Owen's enjoying it, I have to say. So it really, it couldn't be any easier. So I think it's a great, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
I have to add to that too, Jen, because I've used the window several times. Also, Dana, I always make a point to talk to the staff person and find out if they're okay with all of this. And everyone has said, yes, they're very comfortable. They feel that you've made this safe for them. And you do have a little elderly staff. So it's important that they're confident going to work, that it's going to be okay, you know, so.
Yeah.
Nice job all around, right?
I have a question in general. How, I'm not sure because I haven't gone out much myself, but how are we assuring that we have enough, you know, hand sanitizer?
I was just going to mention that in my announcements. Once we got past the reopening, I had, that's the first thing on my list to talk about with you. So I'll talk about that in a couple of minutes. Okay, thank you. That's an excellent question, a key question.
All right, if nobody else has any comments, then we just need a motion for the reopening plan.
I'll make a motion to accept the reopening plan with the addition of suspending all fines through the end of the year.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I will, that's the last item that needed to be voted on aside from adjourning. So I know that there's a chance someone might need to cut out quick if I talk long for the, the next few announcements. So I'll just say that was the last that required a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Jen, continue.
The director's report, which we don't have, I mean, I can't imagine why you were so busy that you couldn't write one, but we'll, we'll discuss that later.
You know that my, my reports tend to run long, right? So, and I, I, you know, I haven't provided you with the director's report since March. So I mean, there's a lot to catch you up on and I just said, no way this is going to happen. Plus, I don't want it to be extraordinarily long. So I know if I can just get some out through announcements, get some of them out, then you're aware. And then that'll also help me condense the director's report.
I totally agree.
Okay, good. So in terms of announcements, in the reopening plan that we approved today, I don't really talk too much about PPE or how are we, you know, doing with hand sanitizer, et cetera, other than securing enough PPE to have, you know, to be able to run what we're trying to run. And the reason why I removed it is because the, I don't know what the right word is, the pressure, I guess, has been lifted off department heads for obtaining PPE because the fire chief, Chief Gallagher, and I mean, essentially the department is working with Town Hall to provide PPE for all of the departments. I have to say that that is beyond incredible. The first time I went, you know, Chief Gallagher had dropped off some supplies and then like a week later, I went to fire department to pick up additional PPE. And then I cut the bag back here. I emailed him that I practically cried because I was just so in awe of the fact that, because at that point too, it was impossible to order anything online or to find anything in stores. And there were wipes and masks and gloves. And it was, it just made me feel that we could, or I could confidently move forward with any hope of reopening to present to you and to present to our staff. And yesterday, we received a big bins worth of additional PPE. So we have, at least for right now, plenty of wipes, plenty of hand sanitizer. We, we got face shields in the donation, not donation, but in the bin that arrived yesterday, that contained face shields for the staff. More masks, more gloves. I mean, we have, we have plenty of gloves so that when staff is handling material. We're also doing temperature checks. That's part of the self-assessment portion of the town's reopening plan. And since we work for the town, we follow the town's reopening plan in terms of workplace safety. And so we are doing self-assessments at the start of every shift and we're doing temperature checks with staff or they're doing, you know, each staff member is doing their own temperature check. And we got the thermometer through the fire department, the, you know, ear probes for the thermometer from the fire department. So I can't say enough that I think because Chief Gallagher is such a, you know, outstanding human that people support him and then he in turn supports other town departments. And I know that, you know, other library directors I know are not in the same situation in their towns. So it's wonderful that the town has been able to rely on the fire department to obtain what it is that we need to function. And so I'm greatly appreciative to the fire department and also to, you know, our town administration for making it possible for us to take part in that too versus us trying to find, you know, wipes wherever we can. Because it can still be hard to find wipes. That's where we're at with the PPE. So I feel very, very confident, especially after yesterday's delivery, that we can continue to safely run this takeout service for as long as we need to and have the supplies to get us through that. And like Nancy said, and I appreciate so much that you check in with staff. They appreciate that also. You know, they are very comfortable coming in and it's because, it's not, I appreciate that, you know, they say that I've, I've made it that way, but it's because I've had support from, you know, other town departments as well that has helped me to, you know, make this happen. So it's, it's not all on me. It takes a village, as you all know. Anyway, that, so that's where we're at on the PPE. Which is great. I also just wanted to quickly say, and like, I, I do need to really review all of the work that the staff did while we were working remotely. And I do want to present that to you so you can see all that was accomplished remotely. But I do just want to publicly acknowledge the fact that, you know, our, the eight staff members who worked remotely or the ones who primarily worked remotely, the custodian and I were reporting into the building still. But the eight staff members who worked remotely were so fortunate that they all had internet access at home, which allowed them to work remotely. All but one of them had a computer to use at home. We lent one of our laptops to the staff member who didn't have a computer at home. At one point, my home computer wasn't working, so I borrowed one of the laptops also. So we're fortunate that we have the laptops, thanks to the Friends. And we're also fortunate that the, most of the staff could, could work, could shift to a remote work environment. Because I know not all libraries in the area were as fortunate with what to do with their staff. And the fact that the staff adapted to working at home is also amazing to me. I mean, we did receive a lot of support from the network in terms of free webinars. Because I'm a member of the American Library Association and the Public Library Association, we were able to take advantage of webinars through those entities for free. And so they, they did do a lot of webinar watching, but the webinar watching led to projects or the development of, you know, future projects that, or future programming we could do here. And it really gave them a chance to sort of go beyond what it is that they do in the library. I mean, the majority of our staff are, are in positions that are customer focused. And when you don't have a customer in front of you, what do you exactly do? So I will really go into detail with that in a future director's report, but I just wanted to say how fortunate we are to have the staff members that we have and that they had the ability to work remotely. It made my job a lot easier in terms of I didn't have to be worried about what they were going to do. I mean, it, some weeks it felt like a full-time job, just finding things for people to do in the beginning, you know, when it was like, well, wow, what, what is everyone going to do from home? Once we, we got going on that. And then they independently came up with projects as well. And then we learned that you can do things like evaluate the collection from home. So even when you're not physically able to touch the collection, you can use rapport. Study things to figure out, you know, if, hey, that book's been here way too long or, you know, there's a new edition of that book and we should buy the new edition of the book. So the staff really were able to do some thoughtful, very meaningful, helpful work that wouldn't have happened otherwise. So anyway, I just needed, I couldn't not get through this meeting without saying thank you to the staff for really doing their best beyond their best and then for rallying behind me in, in developing the reopening plan and for really starting this, this takeout service. So and, and the takeout service, I'm happy to hear that you think it's going well. The words we've heard from patrons are that it's going well. And I kind of believe it's going to be here to stay for a while at least. You know, even if we are to start letting people in at some point by appointment. I think the takeout is, is a very good option. And I think a lot of people, even in a post-COVID world, will still like the idea of the takeout option now that it's started. So, you know, I think takeout's here to stay. So it needs some tweaking. There are parts of it that still need to be worked on, but I think overall it's, it's more successful even than I thought it was going to be. So, so that's where we're at. One of the last.
I have to go.
All right.
Nice to see you all and I'll catch the rest of this on video.
Thank you, Terry. Nice seeing you.
Thanks, take care.
Dana, I have, do you think it's necessary to continue the bags?
Yes, we have them, so we're going to continue the bags. We are going to start, one of the reasons why I wanted the bags in the first place. So when you, in case you, you don't know, when you borrow an item, it gets put into a bag and the receipt gets stapled to the bag. For anyone who hasn't used the service. So we're handing a bag through the window and not touching the actual item as we pass it through. It seemed very important, especially in the beginning of developing this plan, to use bags. Because everywhere you go, that's how you're getting, you know, you're being handed a bag, you know, when you're doing any kind of a curbside or takeout service. And it just seemed like a safer option versus handing off something, especially with all the discussion that we've had about plastic items or items wrapped in plastic. So that seemed really important. The Friends of the Library stepped up as they always do and allowed for the purchase of bags. We also got some, you know, through our state aid account. So I did a purchase, I did purchase additional bags through the state aid account. We've since had some bags donated by staff and staff family members to use going forward. We also found out through the Council on Aging yesterday that they received a very large donation of cloth bags. And if we needed cloth bags, they'd step in and give us some cloth, cloth bags if we start to run out of paper bags. We are going to start giving people the option as to whether or not they want a paper bag. I mean, the paper bag for the most, at least with most of them, and if we don't overload the bags, which we're trying not to, they can be reused for something else. But we know that some people, you know, think the bag is, is unnecessary. I think the majority are really happy to get the bag. But what we're going to do when we call people to schedule a pickup time is give them the option. And if they choose not to have a bag, we're going to ask them to at least bring a bag that they will then put the items in. Because the bag also contains your items in your vehicle going home so that a book doesn't, or DVD, because the DVDs can be shifty like that, that they don't fall off the seat of a car and end up underneath the seat and then you forget that it's underneath the seat. I hear that a lot from people. I returned DVD. I don't have that. I know I returned it. And then like a month later, they are cleaning in their car and they find it. So the bag also contains whatever it is you're checking out, especially if you're checking out multiple items. But we are, like I said, going to start asking people. I mean, while we have the bags, we might as well use them. But we will start giving people the option as to whether or not they want to bring their own bag or they want their.
Yeah, because I right now have a couple of bags here and I thought, gee, I'll return it when I pick up my book and they could just put my books back in my bag.
Right.
That would be okay.
Well, and we'll, and we'll start saying that to you once we start calling. Not this week, but probably next week. The plan is to start saying, do you have a bag to bring back with you? Or, I mean, we're also now got a better handle on who's already been here and who hasn't already been here. So, you know, we've been also stapling to each bag information about the takeout service or if you have items to return, what to do. And eventually we'll stop stapling that to every single bag also because, you know, we, we know we're getting repeat customers at this point. So that, that's where we stand on the bags.
Excellent.
Yeah. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, I had mentioned it briefly at the beginning, is that we have launched our summer reading program. And we're fully acknowledging that summer is different this year. It has to be. But the staff has been so committed to still making it fun and making it a memorable summer. And, you know, one of the things I think I mentioned in an email is that we received a grant from the state which they received through federal funds to support a program called Beanstack, which is a software that has an app or you can just use the PC version. And with that has an app, or you can just use the PC version. And with Beanstack, you can track books that you're reading, or the amount of time you spend reading. And you can also partake in virtual challenges right through the Beanstack site. So when we found out we got the grant, I said, well, wow, that's great, but I can't create a site through Beanstack right now. I could just tell from the description that they sent that that was gonna be real labor-intensive. So I turned to Sandra, Bethany, and Elizabeth, who were a wonderful team together to create this Beanstack site. And they've just worked so hard in making this happen and making it look real good. And I think it's something our patrons of any age will really enjoy using. So right now, the best way to get onto Beanstack, if you didn't receive the summer newsletter today, is to visit our website, acupl.org. And all of the summer reading information is right at the top of the page. But there is a link right to Beanstack there, along with some step-by-step instructions for using it. One of the things we're able to do through Beanstack is that people can record the amount of minutes that they're reading. And we decided, or Sandra had the great idea, to do a community-wide reading challenge for the summer. Since the minutes are being tabulated, why not make a challenge? To go with, with challenging the community to read 30,000 minutes this summer, starting this week and ending August 15th. And every time you log your minutes in Beanstack, it will tally to the total. So it just started yesterday. And I believe we already had 319 minutes logged as of this morning. So we're well on our way to the goal of 30,000 minutes. Bethany and her family, the theme this year is imagine your story, and it has a lot to do with fairy tales and folktales and mythical creatures. So Bethany and her family during quarantine built us a castle out of cardboard boxes and Pringles cans, I believe, and felt. And it will be arriving at the library soon. We're gonna put it in a window so that people can see the castle and see the progress in terms of the 30,000 minutes read, because we're going to somehow indicate on the castle where we stand on the 30,000 minutes goal. With the, once we reach 30,000 minutes, we're going to plant the Town of a Cushionet flag onto the top of the castle. And you'll know we'll reach the goal of 30,000 minutes. So.
Great idea.
On, yeah, the, the people who participate on Beanstack can earn badges. There's different activities you can do that earn you a badge. You know, if you read a mystery, or if you read for 25 minutes, there's all different kinds of things that you can earn badges for. There's also a bingo game embedded into Beanstack. There's something called a clue, a whodunit mystery. There's three different versions of that loaded, loaded into Beanstack. And essentially, Bethany took the game clue and made a library version without any murder, but with accidents in the library, like maybe a staff member is covered in ink from the copier because somebody didn't load the ink cartridge correctly, that kind of thing, little fun stuff. But nothing dangerous or deadly. So there's three different versions of that for people to play in Beanstack. Sandra's also created a challenge that we expect could take people, or we hope would take people a few weeks. I mean, some people might do it very quickly, but others, it could, could really take you the whole summer. It's called the Hidden Castle Quest. And there are a series of challenges that take place throughout the community, the Cushionet community. And as you complete the challenges, you earn badges and are able to move on to the next challenge. And hopefully you'll find the hidden castle before the end of the program. So there's a lot of really cool virtual things to do within. We also have paper versions of some of the challenges available at the library. So people will be able to stop by to get a bingo card, or to, you know, have access to some of the things we're, we're doing through Beanstack. But I think Beanstack's gonna be a lot of fun. And, and I hope you all sign up and have your accounts. You all read, so you can log your minutes and try to get us to that 30,000 minute goal. Some of you read so much that we could probably surpass the 30,000. We're also bringing back the Read and Bead program, which the kids who use our library love. That's for ages three and up. We're doing it contactless this year, starting July 6th. Kids will be able to come pick up their beads. They'll be, unfortunately, they won't be able to select which beads they want this year, but we're going to try to come up with a way that we can ensure that we're giving them beads that they would like. There's a Google form that was sent out in today's newsletter, and it's also linked to our homepage on our site, where parents can fill out that form. And, you know, we asked for the, your child's favorite color, those kinds of things. So we can try to give you, you know, make sure we're giving out beads that your child would like to make a necklace out of. So that's coming back. And like I had mentioned, the Take and Make crafts, about 40 last week, have already given out over a dozen. And I, I think, I think that's gonna be really successful. We're giving out a different craft every week. And we're announcing the crafts on, every Monday on our Facebook page. And there will also be a weekly summer reading newsletter that people who sign up for Beanstack will receive. And that's where they'll also be able to learn about what we're doing for the craft. So this week is the Dino Craft. And it's fun, because you get to use toilet paper tubes for the feet. So, you know, who doesn't wanna do something? Kids love that. I love it. So anyway, we're, we're really gonna do what we can to make it a lot of fun. The friends are supporting, you know, the things that we would like to do. There will be prizes throughout the summer randomly. And then also, there will be a grand finale raffle, like we often do. So, you know, all the information, like I said, is on the website. And we hope people will check it out and participate to just have something, something fun to do. So that was my summer reading. And the last thing I just wanted to say is that I appreciate you all tuning in today. I'm sorry that we're down one. I know our town clerk is feverishly counting up the results from all, I guess there were a lot of vacancies this year for various positions. And so that certainly requires a lot of work through the town clerk's office. But hopefully, we will know our new trustee any day now. And we'll, next time we get together, she or he will be with us. But thank you for, you know, being willing to meet with me today through Zoom. And I think we'll be meeting through Zoom for a while. If that's just the way it is right now. I will say, I've, I've been feeling a little disconnected to the board, just in terms of the fact that we haven't been able to meet. And it's not always, you know, we, we can't discuss much during, through email. So it's, you know, even if I send you an email, there can't be a discussion, you know, based on the, on the rules, you know, through email. So I appreciate when you read my emails. Thank you. And if you ever have any questions about anything I send out, please don't hesitate to comment back or email me. And I, I hope that, you know, if we can start meeting hopefully monthly again, then, you know, I don't know if you also feel disconnected from the board, but this is such a critical time, I think, for us to feel connected, that, you know, I look forward to, to, you know, meeting, meeting again soon-ish.
Speaking of meeting again soon.
Yes.
Should we try to set a date for the next meeting?
We could do that today, if that works for everyone.
I think it would be good even just to touch base. I mean, even if there's really not too much of an agenda, but even if it's just to touch base, I mean, it could be just a quick, quick meeting. But I think maybe that would help to feel more connected now that things are happening, rather than, you know, when everyone was home and nobody was doing, you know, there wasn't much to say. Now I think there's a lot going on.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, I agree. Does this timeframe work for people at noon? Or is it, is it better to go to morning or to, to an evening? Or late afternoon?
This, this works for me.
Works for me.
Yeah, it works for me.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, while, while we're doing, you know, service the way we are, it's, it's an okay time for me, too. I think if, if, once we start letting the public back into the building, it would be a challenge. But for now, it's, it's okay, you know, for, for me as well. So, or Tuesday is good? Or is there a different day of the week that would be better? It is Tuesday, right? Yeah, today's Tuesday.
Yeah, today's Tuesday.
Still catching up with that. Maybe we could go for Tuesday, July 21st, or the 28th at noon. And it would probably be a much shorter meeting.
28th works better for me.
Okay.
If that's okay with everybody else.
I, I wouldn't be able to, I'll be, I'm camping down, discuss it, and there's no wifi down there.
Ah.
Well, we could just go with you.
Yeah.
No? Okay.
That's fine. We could have the meeting right there on the beach.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds great.
Wow, that would be good.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. That might have been the one that they can't, that's, oh, they canceled that one. They canceled all, they canceled all the camper reservations. And then you had to stop calling in again. And they didn't, we couldn't get that. Okay, unavailable.
Okay, good. Well, I'm sorry that, you're sorry your plans got canceled, but good then for us.
So we'll do Tuesday, July 28th at noon via Zoom again.
Okay.
That's good.
Tentatively scheduled, anyway.
Great.
Thanks.
All right, so we're, I think we're all set. Does anybody have anything else? Nope. Then we need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Buddy.
The Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is 1:06.